I'd love to tell you. Hmm.
Maybe if she proves something.
All right, it's five o'clock. I call this session to order. We've got a lot of items here and I doubt very much we're gonna get an opportunity to really cover them all. So what I wanna do is go through them and at this point give my opinion. So with the deer hunting, I don't see any issue with what we're doing. I think we have an ordinance and we should go forward with it. Live streaming, our county needs.
We're not inputting?
Once I, once I go through all of them, then we'll open it up. I will ask for input. So as far as the live streaming goes, I think they've done a good job and we should continue and we should put the, the ordinance that we didn't approve back on the meeting for next, next meeting. The drinking fountain, it's a, it's a something that a local organization is trying to do. I think it's a good idea. We should let them go forward with it when they raise some funds. The tree camping, we already have an ordinance that covers that. The social district, the area in question is already included in the social district. There's no need to expand that. The G Park walkway, that's a public right of way that had no desire to give up. It belongs to the people and we need to keep it and maintain it. The recreational parking vehicle, I don't think there's anything illegal going on there. We have ordinances that cover any potential legal activity like that. Camping, we don't allow camping in the city. Short-term rental regulations, Harmless Laws brought forth a number of proposals that other communities are doing. I think we should add that to a work session, talk about it. And the outdoor dining, in order to take that away, we have to have a, an opportunity for the public to come forward and speak on that. So that's something that needs to be scheduled. With that, is there anyone on the council that has any particular one that they wanna jump onto?
You know, I wouldn't mind if Dan would give just, if you can, welcome Dan.
Yeah, thanks.
Hi, I just noticed you did. If you could just give a short description of what that is. I'm not sure everybody has the, has the packet. That would be helpful and it'd be, I know there's a couple that I was unsure.
For which one?
Well, all of them. I mean, yeah, just, I, I mean, they're all on the work session and, and then there's, there's a few that I, I would like to have a conversation about and, and also I'd like to hear from other council members as well.
Yeah.
If, if that's okay.
Yes.
The draft ordinance is to allow hunting the bow on public property. Expanding it from, I think, three acres to six acres.
Yeah, the other way around.
The other way around.
Sorry, not between, yep.
Expansion means bigger.
Did, did we also, um, did, did we also post some of the different guidelines? I know I had some questions from folks about safety issues with schools, playgrounds, things like that. Can you remind me, Jeff? I know you mentioned.
Yeah, the, the thing in here is the under C at the bottom there, that's the only that really changed from what Steve and I wanted to get put in here. Essentially what it does is it opens up certain pieces of property based on, um, approval by the, I do believe DPW, the city manager and the police chief maybe, something like that. Um, they're gonna have a lottery, um, so those spots, the people will pick A, B, C, however many we have. Um, they'll put their name in a hat. Um, they'll draw it out. First person, they get picked for two weeks and it just kinda goes down.
Okay.
And allows us to, and it's city property. It's not, it's not open parks. It's not Goodrich Park or anything like that. It's, it's wooded areas where, where deer travel, so.
Okay. And then do we have setbacks, you know?
There's, you just follow the rules of DNR. There's, there's rules.
Well, enlighten me. I, I had some specific questions about safety.
Okay, the.
I have some info there, yeah.
It, it's elevated, so they're not shooting flat. They're shooting elevated from a, from a tree stand.
That's a city requirement.
So that, that will be, nothing is shooting, arrows won't shoot flat. They'll shoot down. So, um.
We're, we're talking a hundred and fifty feet or fifty yards from lot lines or that's the way I read this thing.
Yeah, hunting may not occur within a hundred and fifty feet of any building, public streets, the property lines, uh, the eligible property.
Which is, which is.
That's different from, from the DNR. The DNR requires a hundred and fifty yards for gun, but it has no requirement.
No requirement of bow, yep.
I mean, you can hunt, if you got three acres, you can hunt from your back porch if you want.
Yep.
Or if you're, or if somebody gives you permission to hunt, you can hunt within that safety zone. You can even do that with a gun. If you are, have permission to hunt somebody's back forty, you can hunt closer to a hundred and fifty yards to their house if you got ready for permission.
So the only thing we're really changing is the part in black, which will just allow certain pieces of city property to be used and utilized under a lottery system. It's the same, essentially the same thing Monty does and I do believe the, I know that the, the county does. The county allows out of the wastewater and some other places in the county, they allow hunters to do that.
I, I will have to come up with my own answer. I, I'm kinda neutral on the issue, but I have had some people recently ask me about safety and I'm not quite sure that that answers it as much as I need, but I can do that on my own.
Safety as far as what do you wanna, what, what kind of.
People getting hit.
We need an ordinance by the twenty-sixth according to what I'm reading.
I, I'm not stopping it. I'm just, I need to come up with an answer to the question, how are we protecting public safety?
They're elevated.
That's, that's right.
So somebody up there can't? Oh, so, I'm not a deer hunter, you know that.
You can't shoot more than fifty yards, I think it says in the, in the ordinance.
Right. Yeah, good luck with that with a bow hit.
Yeah.
Thirty-five on a good day.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay, I, I will deal with that on my own, but thanks.
So there, there is an issue of liability with allowing it on city of property and requiring somebody to be from an elevated position. What if they fall?
There's.
There, yeah, I mean, there, the city's not, the city's not building.
Tree stands, right?
No, they're, they're.
But we're required.
Right. They're manufactured tree stands, normally. Well, we're not gonna allow them to put a wood structure up.
Most they can figure.
On, on their own property, yes, but not on city property.
Can, can we have a waiver written up that they sign off on when they get run?
And, and I don't know what's in there. I don't know what we, I, I think I've seen what we have to design.
Yeah, I, it's not coming to me right now whether or not we have a waiver built into that application or not. I'd have to see the law. And then if we don't and we want to, then I might just touch base with you, Will, about language to make sure.
You're breaking some kind of law if you're on public property hunting with alcohol, under the influence of alcohol or whatever. Anyway, you can't even do it in the woods, you know? They can, they can give you a ticket for.
Yeah, everybody will fall under.
Under the influence of the weapon.
Even, even with our ordinance, you'll still fall under the DNR rules.
Yeah, this is a big.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll fix it administratively, but it doesn't really affect the ordinance?
Right.
Yeah. Well, there's a lot of laws, a lot of things about drinking and things. People still do it. That's what worries me a little bit. But I, I'm okay with it. I just was concerned about safety and maybe I can even chat about Will or dive into it with somebody else to make sure I have a good answer to people about public safety.
I like the ten dollar fee if you get your name drawn because otherwise, you know, people will just put their name in and maybe they're anti-hunters and they just wanna close it off if people aren't really lying. So if you make them pay a little bit, maybe they won't do that so easily. But it probably wouldn't happen, but.
If they do, they only get two weeks to start.
Yeah, only two weeks and then it's opened up for the next guy.
How, how many deer can you take?
You can take as many as you want.
Yeah, right now, right now.
Two bucks.
Right now, the way the DNR is, is if you get a, a combo license, you can take a, a combination of a, a buck over three points on one side and then a buck four points on one side, two doe, a doe and a buck, or two doe. And then on top of that, they have doe licenses available.
Unlimited.
Um, pretty much unlimited, over the counter. Um, they still do the old draw, so there, I just got my notice the other day and back about it, so.
I guess all I was looking at was if, you know, you're, you're, you're gonna give it to somebody for two weeks. If they get two deer the first two days, they go, wow.
It'll take them to calm down.
You know, to be able to give more people to hunt.
Yeah.
If that person came forward and said, I got what I wanted or I got what my limit is, you know.
And get the next person in line.
Yeah, get the next person then. Not, no, no wait a whole two weeks.
Makes sense and have.
I would like to see as many deer taken as possible. I, I don't like, you know, I mean, nobody's gonna be going out deer hunting just to shoot deer and kill them. I mean, they're, they're, they're doing it for the meat, especially the bow hunters, for sure. And, uh, the population of the deer in the city is just nuts.
Ridiculous. And we gotta get it way, you know, we gotta get it under control a lot more than what we're getting right now, so.
Kenny, if you come up with any specific safety concerns, I'm sure that we, we want to address them.
Sure. And it was mainly just recently, people were asking me what's, you know, what's been hot topics and I've mentioned deer and they're like, oh, I don't like that. That's, that's been the routine response I've gotten. It's not a lot, but I've had people and I said, well, I think everything is set up so that, you know, there are setbacks and things like that. And so, um, I just, myself, I, like I said, I'm kinda neutral on the issue. I, I'd like people to care about it, to deal with the issue. But I, I'm not quite sure I have a good answer to that. I'll, I'll work on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Could we just real fast, could we put maybe some signs up on those areas that, you know, indicate, that let people know, hey, there might be act upon thing going on here? I mean, if that's kinda what you're thinking, if somebody's walking through the area where they're hunting, they can't, deer can't read.
No, but it's a lot of that to be a lot of signs.
Well, okay, I don't, this is tied, I'm not a hunter.
Maybe, maybe an occasional, 'cause I know people, you know, people walk their dogs.
Yeah, people go to Duck Lake State Park and you can bow hunt in Duck Lake State Park. I mean, I walk, I walk by bow hunters and everything else and you, until you see the tree stand, you go, hey, and you kinda give them a nod and keep moving along, I mean.
But I try to avoid it during, taking my dogs out there during deer hunting. I'd rather, you know, not have someone have to apologize for killing my dogs.
Normally.
If you can't tell the deer from the dog and the deer.
Well, some of the dogs are fine. Yeah, come on.
Okay, let's, let's move on to the next subject.
Yeah, sorry, to digress.
Okay, next one, uh, live streaming council meeting. So the, uh, contract with Catchmark expired. So we request that they come today. We're not under contract, but I offered to pay them what various contracts stated so we would have streaming services today. And I, I think we just need a resolution on, is it something we're gonna continue or, uh, or do we need to stream?
I do believe we had, didn't we have a letter from them? Okay. And I, I know they did post on social media that there was no live streaming tonight because they don't have a contract with us.
Right, I, I handled that offline. I, I didn't see that.
Okay, that, but that's fine. That's when I saw that that was, and.
Yeah, they don't have a contract in place, so they're, they weren't required to be here today.
Exactly. I, I understand that. Um, I, it makes sense. I'm, I, I think I'm happy to have them restart myself.
I, I would second that if you wanted to have a motion.
Can we do that in the work session?
I'm not gonna find it.
No, we can, we can generally say I'm in favor of renewing the contract.
I'm in favor of renewing.
Yeah, okay.
Was that an amendment? That was in the last council meeting?
That was in the last council meeting, so we could, we could bring that back up, put it on the table again?
Yeah, we can have it, we could have it on this, to, to approve it. We could have it on this one. It's not on the agenda, right?
Is there, um, Will, can you advise on how to do that? Cause I got confused last time.
Oh, we can just have a motion at the beginning when it comes to the agenda too.
So when we amend, so I have to amend the agenda to put it on?
Yeah, we should add it to the agenda.
Okay, so before we vote on the approved the agenda?
Correct.
Of the work session, yes.
Right.
Uh, no, of the regular session.
Of the regular session.
Regular session, this regular session, so.
Okay, okay, thank you.
We'll put it on.
I, I really appreciate the letter from Kara and some of the explanation. I know there were some concerns about the sound and the, the quality of the video, so I really appreciated though the explanation as to why that might be happening. And to those points, is there a way to connect directly to the internet instead of using wifi and into the system or, you know, I think we, we, there, there are things, I mean, are there things we could do from a city perspective to help make the quality better from those, those points? I mean, they're, they're good points and valid if, if we can help. I, I mean, I would like to be able to explore some of those options instead of just saying, okay, well, let's just carry on. Cause I mean, people have expressed concern and an explanation for why those things are happening. Is there, do we have an opportunity to amend those things to make it a little bit better or a lot better? I don't know.
Well, I, I'd like to explore the options. Is it possible to go forward with them with the caveat that we want to explore our direct connection?
Me, yeah, I would.
If my memory serves me correctly, and I am not an IT expert, excuse me, and I address them too. I recall in the beginning, and I don't care, I don't think you were here at the time, but someone from Catchmark was and they were trying to actually connect to our ethernet cable and because of central dispatch and our, you know, secret top security firewall, I think that was an issue and I think that's why we went. Does that sound like something logical to her?
Yeah.
Um, and that's what I remember when they started to go using wifi instead. So no matter what, who you bring in, we're gonna be facing that type of issue. So that was, so some of the bumps in the road in the beginning was that whole ethernet.
That makes, that makes sense to me then, but is there, has that been a couple of years? Has technology changed enough on something or other that?
I don't.
That we could do something different?
No, our, 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 our line is through dispatch, which is, yeah, and that won't change. That's, it's pretty much a.
Okay.
A, a lock system. That, we'd almost have to put in a dedicated line just for that. That wasn't through central dispatch, um, to do that with. And I don't know how much that would run to do that, but we will find out.
Yeah, I, I guess I would, I mean, I'm in favor of, of the streaming for sure. I mean, it's, I think it's very important. And I'm good to go ahead with it, but I would still like to, as things come up, explore options to. explore options to continually increase it, and increase the quality.
I, I would like to ask them, I mean, tech, I mean, I don't know, maybe there's things that they can do that don't hook into our system. I'm not, I don't, I don't really, that's not my area, but I would, I'd, I'd like to ask them again. I'd like to ask I- IT and just say, you know, and, or maybe beyond that, are there some things that, um, you know, can, can they be up closer, you know, right in the front seat or, you know, I mean, simple things? I, you know, I'd, I'd like to check into them, but, but I, I support them restarting.
Well, I think very few of us up here have watched a live stream.
I have.
I have. And I've, I've had no issue with, with the live streaming. And I've, and I've watched it after the fact and I've had no issue as far as being able to see and hear. So I'm certainly satisfied with the level of service that we're, we're getting at, at the price we're paying.
I can, I can, aside from the, the contract, I can just look at upgrading our sound system, see how much it'll run. And if it's gonna be outrageous, no. If, if it's something simple where we're just adding mics that are integrated with their system, maybe that's an option.
Sure.
I, I can just start looking into it.
Oh, good.
Kevin, next subject, please.
Drinking fountain. So this was brought up with the Tifa board, was it?
It was initially presented to the Tifa board.
Yeah.
With the idea that they wanted to put the, the drinking fountain next to Water Dog, which is in the Tifa district. But they've sat down with our, our staff and they said they would prefer it to be in front of the, um, Chamber of Commerce simply for the e, for the ease of hooking up the water to it. And they're not in the Tifa district. So it would be something that would come out of the, the city's general fund.
Okay. Well, that's, that's helpful. And, and this, I think is, to me, is, is as much an explanation for the, the people in the, um, audience who haven't looked at, haven't read the fifty-eight pages.
Yeah, and the, uh, it, it's in memory of one of their lost friends, Paul Kissel.
Paul Kissel.
He passed away recently and he was an avid biker. And if the bike club wants to raise funds and they're looking to the city to help out, it'll be a drinking fountain, I think, a bottle filler and, uh.
Dog.
A dog will host it.
Oh, that's a great idea.
So if they're only raising five hundred bucks, we're responsible for the rest?
Right. I think, no.
No.
Yes, that's a lot, no. They're looking to see what, how they can get, I, I think is a general question.
Speaking with them, I think the general understanding was they were expecting at the, at the least to, to cover half the cost of it. So, and the, the cost that they, I think they're looking at, the fountain was somewhere in the five to seven thousand dollar range. And then they, there's gonna be some costs incurred by hooking the water up and putting a concrete base, but those are things the city would do with, and we don't know what the cost would be on something like that.
I would be okay to contribute some, but half seems a little steep, given that we, we're so ready. We are already budget constrained and we've had to make some tough calls on, on what we've, we've put forward for other things. Um, twenty-five to three thousand seems like a lot. Um, I would really like to see how much they raise outside of that. Um, certainly supportive of, of contributing something, but that half feels a little steep to me.
Those are me also.
I agree.
There's, there's no commitment here on, on half. Basically, what we've said is raise some money, come, come to us
and tell us what you, how much you got, and then we'll see where.
I, I'd like to know why it has to be, you know, a standalone thing and why it can't just be attached to the, it seems to me like it'd be a lot cheaper to just attach it to the side of the Chamber of Commerce building. You already have plumbing there. You already have drainage there. Uh, it'd just be a matter of, to me, it would just be a matter of buying, buying the thing and sticking it on the side of the building.
Do we own that piece of building?
It's a complicated thing.
Don't we, isn't that DNRs?
The D, yeah, the state, the DNR and then sublet and, yeah, it's, yeah.
It's like a dollar here and a dollar there.
I think this is just generally with the, the concept of, that they wanna put a drinking fountain on bike path. And I think it's a really good thing to have a bike, there isn't one between Whitehall and, I think, there's one at Holland or, or Hart, there's one in Hart. And I think there might be one in Muskegon, North Muskegon, there's one in North Muskegon.
Oh, I think it's a great idea. I, I've mentioned that in the past, that we could be a little more hospitable to folks as they pass through. Is it, um, I'm trying to remember what's down there. It might be nice to put it by a bench or a place they, like a bike rack if they're gonna fill, or I don't know if that makes a difference?
The, the idea is to put it right next to where we filled the community patrol truck. I don't know if you, in front of the, the chambers that.
Or going up the hill a little bit?
No, right there where the West Michigan Pike's, uh, cement post is. Cause there's water right there.
Okay.
That would be a very easy hookup.
In that location, does the DNR get involved?
No, that's our property.
Okay. Sounds good.
Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah.
Tree tapping. Okay, tree tapping. Uh, I don't know where this stuff came from, but.
From me.
There's a city ordinance right now. I think it's just educated the public that they're not allowed to do it.
Dan, would you mind just a little couple sentence explanation? I'm not sure everybody knows what tree tapping is.
Taking maple syrup from city-owned trees.
City tree tapping.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree that that, that this ordinance is sufficient.
Right.
It doesn't specifically say tree tapping, but all the other stuff that it does say.
Yeah.
It, it falls in there.
Don't mess with our trees.
It's just a matter of enforcement is all it is.
Yeah. Okay. Lots of sting operations, so.
There you go.
Okay, social district.
Yeah, I need to hop on this one.
What's that?
Yeah, so, um, there's two, two thoughts on this one. One is, um, the current social district, I think everybody has this, is, is this shape. And I'm not sure the, this idea of an expanded common area, there's two parts to it. One is north mirrors, which is what's used for, I don't know what they call them, but on the Monday nights, when they lose it and they close it down. And that's used more or less as a social district at that spot. So my thought would be, I would recommend that that be included in the social district for, for that reason. The, the other property around the, on the, on the streets there, that's up to you. I, I, I don't know if there's a particular reason for that or not. Um, that's a separate issue, but the part on north mirrors, and it would be limited to only during the times when the city closes the street for, would be in the social district. It's obviously not for other things.
It can, it can be ordered out, right?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, there, there's a confusion surrounding this because the social district is a much bigger district. We, we had to present to the Liquor Control Commission, this is going to be our social district. It's bordered by Division, Hanson, Thompson and Spring. That's the social district. The areas that are in that map are the common area.
Right.
And when the, the Liquor Control Commission came up with this idea, they didn't think it clearly all the way through. And it's, other, other municipalities have had issues with this. I actually, uh, reached out to the Liquor Control Commission yesterday and asked them specifically to give me a reading on social district versus common area. And they said, well, send your question to this email.
Yeah.
And we'll get back with you.
Yeah, cause I don't wanna answer it.
So, so that's where, where it's at.
Yeah. It's, and I think we kinda mentioned this earlier too, that the Liquor Control Commission really doesn't enforce this. It's, it's up to the local.
Right.
Police to, to enforce this and their signs. And, and one of the things that, that has happened is that, so there, there should be signs at the boundaries that say this is the end of the social district and so forth. And, and people sometimes take their, you know, deer not outside of the social district and maybe just even crossing the street at the wrong point or something like that. And, and so generally the, the feeling has been that it's, it's a little better to have it slightly expanded if it's, if it's an area that's always covered. Um, but really, I think that, that's not really an issue here. I don't know, again, this part on the outside, I, I don't know if there's a reason why that was being considered. But because the area on mirrors is actually used, it probably would make sense to add that to the social district on that limited basis.
I guess the outside part, the way it looks to me, would have done to include that pocket park.
Yeah, yes, right. And, and if, and if you wanna allow people to walk around with their beer, there's no establishment there. So if you wanna have people be able to walk around with their beer.
So essentially, everything we're looking at here is the social district.
Yeah.
This whole map is the social district. So this is all approved. This is just common areas we're looking at.
Yeah, just expanding the common area.
Right.
Silly.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, I mean, let's, let's put, yeah, so, so you, so you do a social district and then you, and then you restrict the social district that you built.
It was all put through in kind of a rush, COVID to, to sort of keep, how do you places open? Give some options, options during that time period.
Plus, it's a little hard to tell on this map whether it's shaded as part of the area or if that's shadows from the buildings.
Yeah, no, well, I don't know if the, the color one, it's easier. I don't know if it's easier to print this one in color.
Something that was said just a second ago, the whole map is the social district, even across the streets, the back alley and all.
Yeah, but that's, but people can't go walk around there with a drink. It's, it's an odd distinction. They can, if you go in the common areas.
Yeah, so, so essentially what they did, Tom, is they made, is we made this, so this area is the social district.
Lets them expand.
The only time, the only place people can go is in the common area with that. So it's, as, like Will said, it's confusing. Why did they just not say, okay, here's your bor, borders of the social district, call it good? But now you're restricting what you made to begin with, you're restricting what your first thing you made.
And if you, do we do, do we need to do anything at this point?
I, again, I would recommend because north mirrors during the Mondays is closed off and, and used as a social district in essence, I would, I would like the tables to put out and stuff. I, I would recommend adding that to the common.
Yeah.
Makes sense to me.
And a separate question is whether or not you wanna add the pocket.
Pocket part, we might as well add the.
Which is in the social.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, it's in the social district. So that means it's easier to get, you're basically just notified at this point. The only real distinction at this point, you just notify Liquor Control that you're expanding the common area because you're still within the social district. If you wanna make your social district bigger, then that.
That's a different, that's a different issue.
Here, you're just notifying them that you're changing your common area. It's not.
Probably doesn't hurt just to do both of them at the same time.
Do we do that by resolution, Will?
Yeah, we should have a resolution to add it.
There's some paperwork yet.
So I guess, so we only, multiple times, do, do we need to look at the other side, the north side of Mir, uh, Colby as well? You're saying that a person can't cross the street here. They can go here and here, but they can't go across the street and down. I mean, it's, it's, it's kinda silly. I mean.
I would technically, I don't know if there was, I can't remember if there was a reason that was, I, that we're not.
I don't, I, I was.
Just a straight shot from public.
Yeah, it was, and we've had, Chris is, we've had no issues with anything that I've heard or seen.
If you look at the Liquor Control Commission, they're, in their huge file on all the regulations of this, they, they designate that the, in the social district, anywhere in the social district, you can transport a beverage, but you can only consume in the common area.
Yeah.
So.
Don't sip the beer you're carrying.
And that, that was from twenty twenty. They haven't changed it since twenty twenty and it's, it's a common issue that they don't wanna, they don't really wanna address. And, and I, and my feeling is that they kinda are saying to the cities, you guys deal with it. If you're okay with it, we're okay with it.
That's definitely what they're saying.
Right.
I mean, if you, if, if you, I mean, what you've done so far is.
Yeah.
You never did get in trouble for that from Liquor Control, but I think it's, it's still better, I think.
Sure.
Add that to the social district.
Yes.
That is done.
Okay. So from my perspective, looking at this, cause I, I, I wanna do the KISS principle and keep people, make it easier on the department to enforce and make it easier on people to understand. Um, I'd like to see it just go both sides of Colby down to First Street and then run First Street up to the north to the, and catch up with that, that L there. And just, just make it, so essentially you've got this whole block.
Yeah.
And then you've got this partial half a block here and then the other stuff on the other side of the street. Just, just for simplification for everything, so we don't have to keep coming back to this and.
And maybe along your restaurant back there, two miles.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's here.
Yeah, Hanson Hill.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, to the, on the, on the, to the right of that dark colored.
Oh, you're talking in front of the sidewalk in front of them?
Sidewalk in front of them because then somebody could actually take an alcoholic beverage from the establishment and go in the social district, correct?
Yes.
Cause that's. I think they're, they're a part of.
They, they are a part of the social district now. Well, they have permission now to, they're a participant in the common area. They have all Liquor Control approvals, so.
So they can let somebody walk out with a.
Yes.
Are they supposed to be marked, the cups that they take?
Yes.
They do.
But so, but so far, we've been violating the common area over here.
In the middle of the street.
In the middle of the street. But, yeah, yes. I mean, the city has approved that though for that process on those things. So there's, there's, that's why I'm saying, I mean, before there was a social district, you could do that as well. And so, but because it's in the social district, that's what it's used for, um, there's really sort of Elsie's suspenders approach to it back now. It was really covered under another way when the, when, when the city blocked it off. But because it's in the social district, it really make, I think it makes sense to do that. And I think what I would maybe recommend, cause I know there was discussion, if you're gonna expand this to go in front of people's businesses, I'd probably put this on the agenda for next time, if you're gonna do that. Not, not try to do that tonight, but put that on the agenda for next time in case.
So we have a clean map.
If we get a good map, then if, if it's out there and.
I'll correct myself, too. It's not miles.
Yes.
That's what it's called.
Hanson.
Hanson Hill.
Hanson Hill.
Yes.
Sorry about that.
Okay, is there any further on that?
Nah, I'd just throw out that I'm not in favor of including the pocket park into it, but that's just my opinion. I think it's too isolated of an area to patrol. And I don't think it, you know, I don't think it should be part of it. You never, you, you can't tell what's gonna be going on in there.
Okay.
G Park Walkway. Fix, the zoning board of appeals is asking the council reconsider vacating the east portion of the East Park Walkway. If approved, the adjacent property owners would acquire half of the right of way, three feet down each of the space. The land would revert without costing property owners. The city would be required to obtain before night surveys of the walkway and all ten adjacent lots. That's probably why I'm letting the property owners.
Um, any idea the cost for us to have all of that survey to work, if we're giving land to, you know, even three feet, whatever? Uh, shouldn't the people that are getting some of that be participating in the cost?
I would think so.
Well, we could split the cost.
It only goes from G Street to the east, right? Which is, G Street is the park on the east side of the park.
Yeah, from the east to G.
Well, there's ten properties, ten residential properties that would need to be sure, according to what was said.
Oh, yeah, see? That's not gonna be cheap. At least from what I've seen in surveys, what we paid for.
Surveys.
How much would it cost to do it? I, I support the city giving it up. It has, it serves no purpose. Uh, it does not, uh, it's not maintained by the city the way it's supposed to be. You can't even walk down it most of the time unless one of the adjacent property owners goes over and brings it up, so. Uh, I don't have any problems, since we already spent all the money putting the stairway in, I don't have any problem keeping. I don't have any problems, since we already spent all the money putting the stairway in, I don't have any problem keeping the part that goes from G Park down to the lake. But the other part that serves basically no purpose. Most, I'd say ninety-nine percent of people in the city don't even know it's there.
I would disagree with your numbers, but there's a lot of people that are aware of it and do not want to give it up. I'm one of them.
Yeah, I'm one of the ones that was on the zoning board of appeals that all of us agreed that the city should give it up, so.
If I may, how did this, how did this make it to zoning board of appeals?
Because the individual wanted to put a garage on a lot across the street from his property, and he had to have a.
Not across the street.
Not across the street, across from the, the.
On the other side of the.
The other side of the public right of way.
The right of way.
So then, so then, so it would fall within that three feet or whatever, or it'd be encroaching on that?
No, there's a, this, this pathway, we'll call it pathway, sits in the middle of two properties that he owns.
Similar person owns.
Same person owns, and one is not, has a building on it, right, Scott?
Well, it does, but the storm destroyed the garage that was there.
They damaged it. It's not destroyed. He's pretty much restored it. So he wants to put a garage on there, and he needed a variance because of being able to put a building on a garage on not his primary residence. I'm offered the variance to let him put his garage on, but I'm not giving up the property. I don't believe we should be giving up property, especially a public right of way.
I would like to hear from people.
Right away that doesn't serve any purpose.
I think Chris might have a little bit to add on this. The variance that was requested was correctly stated because of that six-foot right of way. If the right of way, not right of way, if the public property wasn't there, it would all been one piece, and he could have built his garage here without the variance. But because it was there, he had to ask for the variance. It was granted by the ZBA to place it there. They had just asked if you guys look at the possibility of vacating that property because they didn't feel that it was really necessary to keep. So they wanted to come back to you guys because it was explained in that it's already came before you guys once before, and at that time, it was decided not to do that. So they were just asking if you could look at it again, if that was something you wanted, and then, you know, you could possibly survey the people in the area or talk about it again, but they just wanted you guys to have it.
Didn't somebody from that neighborhood come to talk to us?
He did. The actual, the guy that went for the variance had went to all the property owners up and down, and he said they were all in favor of it, the people that were right there on.
So is his property under two separate tax IDs then because of that division line?
It's, it's just two different parcels, so it's two different parcel numbers. He placed taxes on all of it, but it's just because it had that separation, it wasn't considered one continuous lot.
So I guess our, from G to Mears, are any more, any more of those split because of that?
Uh, no, pretty much it goes right down.
Right down, right down the lot lines?
He's the only chunk of property that will get all of it, because he owns on both sides of it.
Is there a sidewalk currently all the way?
There is not a sidewalk. There is a six-foot public right of way.
Just a dirt trail or?
Right, and it's, and it's.
Used to be a sidewalk. Did it? Yeah, I rode my bike up and down there when I looked down on Collier Drive. Yeah, but I think it got so.
Overgrown.
Well, overgrown, but also it was probably a dangerous sidewalk when it didn't get fixed.
My understanding is that's, that's like a, the public right of way is like a public park, and you can't just give a public park away without approval of the people.
You know, Debbie mentioned listening to.
We've talked about, there's been talk at various times about getting rid of the marina.
And you can't do that with a park.
Can't do that with a park.
If you could abandon a street, that's the same thing.
Yeah, I know, well, that's right. Well, a street's different than a park.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah, I did double check what, how this is.
Three foot, six foot, isn't it? I would like to know how, more how people in that vicinity who would be likely to use it feel about it. I mean, could we send a letter out to them? I mean, would that be too much hassle? Maybe just in that country called neighborhood, friend.
What do you want me to say in the letters?
I'll just say that there've been some, you know, just.
But it's not their property.
No, but they would be the ones that would, would use it. I'm not going to go over there and park my car and just walk down a walkway. It would be more likely people in that area on, you know.
That's an assumption.
There's also, there are also issues of mending property in the subdivision and who has rights, and you have to notify, you actually have to report to do it. There's a process, and so I, if you want, I can get a little bit more information on that.
That'd be good. And from my perspective, I'm looking at, at least nine surveys that are going to have to be done. Each, each parcel's going to have to be surveyed, other than maybe the one that's split with the garage. Because he owns both of them, I mean, that'll be one survey for both sides, but, you know, you're talking nine, ten surveys, that's, that cost is going to be.
How much is this?
I'd like to know.
Yeah.
I think that would, I think that would help assist my decision based on what the cost of the survey is going to cost. Everybody.
And I'm thinking if we're going to keep it, that we need to get in there and make a sidewalk.
Or at least make a path.
Yeah.
Well, something, yeah.
We spent a lot of money to put that staircase up in that sidewalk.
Yeah.
And you can't get from that sidewalk to the park.
Either way, it's going to cost us some money to run and give it away or whatever it is. I think we should at least improve it if we're going to keep it, but I don't, in my opinion, I don't see a reason to keep it, but, you know, that's up to the people, I guess.
Right.
So.
Sounds like more information needed.
More information needed.
Including cost of the surveys estimate.
Next item, recreational vehicle parking ordinance to regulate the parking of recreational vehicles in residential districts back and forth between the planning commission and the city council in November twenty seventeen, from June to June twenty eighteen. The council chose to take no action. Parking of RVs has come back to the surface, but a camper legally parked on the street of the five hundredth off Warner. Council may request that planning commence amending the zoning ordinance public hearing based on the draft amendment. So you're all provided the draft amended to regulate this.
Do you remember, does anybody remember? I remember that issue, I think I was on and right before I was off. And I think it went to planning, right, Debbie? Oh, planning? Yeah, I don't remember the specifics, but I know planning worked pretty hard to put a ordinance together or proposed ordinance, and then council didn't act on it, and then it just stopped. I think we got a huge outcry from folks. I, don't you, I don't recall.
There was, yeah, nine people, nine people came.
No, but I.
I was at that meeting where nine people came that voiced their opinion against the ordinance, and that's what council said, okay, we're not going to do it.
Okay, but regardless, when I'm talking about a huge outcry, I don't mean just the people at the meeting. It was, it was in the papers, people were talking about it, and I, I was kind, I was in favor of it because there was a huge one in, on the driveway that was blocking the neighbor's view. Yeah, she, she looked out her yard and she couldn't, you know, have a way see down the street because it was, you know, so I, I was in favor of it, but it's, I, I did not see a whole lot of support for it. Now, I'm, you know, I'm reporting what I recall. I'm just, because I was trying to remember what happened with it, and that is, my, my perception was that it was, it was just, it's turned down pretty emphatically. But I'm not saying we don't look at it.
Now, the reason, the reason it didn't pass before, when it was presented, is because it's too restrictive.
I don't know. I don't remember that, Scott.
That's what we determined. That's why, that's why we wanted to know on it.
Oh, okay. No, I'm talking about prior to that. Were you on in seven, twenty-seven or eighteen?
It was presented in twenty eighteen or something.
Okay, yeah.
Twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen, and yes, I was on.
Okay, no, it was, this was before I was off, so we looked at it.
I mean, to, to take care of the problem of the camper that's up by the football field that everybody is complaining about would be, it'd be very easy to just write the law that says you can't park any kind of recreation vehicle in a right of way area, period.
Work for more than forty-eight hours like this.
Yeah, but not, not include people's front yards, and if you're on a corner lot, include people's side yards. That's why it got hold it down before. It was too restrictive.
Okay, but that's, like I said, that was different.
If it just said you can't park anything on the right of way, period.
We could just, I think, Scott, we could include it in, in on-street parking, I mean, kind of like what we do for snow removal. In the same, on-street parking, we don't want people parking those vehicles on, on the street side. It's just, it's the same concept, because I got, I got thinking of it after we talked about it at planning commission, and I'm like, you know, I, I understand, and there was, even at planning, we were talking about issues with side streets and what do you consider front yards and not front yards and everything else, and I got, I got home and I got thinking about it, and I'm like, you know, if we included it in the on-street parking, because this one says off-street.
Yeah.
If we included on, into an on-street zoning or ordinance, they couldn't park there. We just, we just restrict it so you can't park a camper or anything on a.
I think it should be on-street or off-street, because you got the one down here on, well, they finally moved it, but the one down here on Division, that's probably a twenty-five, thirty-foot fifth wheel, but, you know, the guy parked between, he got it up over the curb, and he parked it in the front yard between the curb and the sidewalk.
So the city right of way.
In the city right of way area. So if it's on-street or off-street.
On-street, which included city right of way.
In the right of way area, you can't park anything.
You said Division. Did you meet the one on Warner?
No.
That one's been there for weeks.
It's been there for months.
It has been moved on Warner.
It's been, it's been moved a few feet every now and then.
Okay, just, how about, what are we hearing about the parking? Okay, I get it, because you're using your RV, whatever, you're probably going to move it, but the storing of it in your front yard and in your driveway, that, I think that's where the case where you're talking about, where it was permanently there. I don't even think it had an engine in it. That went on the driveway, yeah. In the driveway, in the, kind of in the, in, in that situation, the driveway is the front yard. They were storing it, and it was, I think it even had a blue tarp on it. What time? In that case, I mean, we wouldn't allow somebody to put a shed there. We wouldn't allow an accessory building or, or a temporary building to be there stored permanently, so I, I'm not sure that it makes sense to be able to store something permanently in a situation like that, because we wouldn't allow an accessory building to be put there.
I could, I could see it getting a little out of hand if you have, you know, people from out of town, say they're from Indiana or Iowa or wherever they're from, they come park their RV on the street there like that, and then they come up and pull it out to Meyer Park for two weeks out of the summer. And the rest of the time, it's sitting there for free. Well, I don't think they ought to be able to do that. That's, that's the way I look at it.
All right, we're, we're going to have to start wrapping this up pretty quick, because we got to get to a public comment, so.
To be continued.
To be continued. Is there any pressing need to carry on with any of the other subjects?
I guess we're just moving to the next word session.
To the next word session. Okay. I do appreciate the short-term rental information.
Yes, I do. Yes, that was good.
I think there's a lot of that, that essentially we can look at as a group and, and take what the best of all of them, because there's some and some and some of the others that are really good, and it's like, piecemeal it together and make it, make it work for us.
My biggest, my biggest question on the short-term rental regulations was the figures that were given to us, that Whitehall has thirty-three percent rental of our
Yes.
housing population. If, if there's a way, by the time we talk about this again, to find out how much of that thirty-three percent is short-term and how much of it is long-term?
I have an answer for you. I checked with Toby. We don't actually, he doesn't keep track of it per se with the short-term versus long-term, but he said if you had to guess. And even Dan said if you do a quick search, there's probably about ten to fifteen short-term rentals. And when I got the numbers from Toby, we're probably more at a thirty-one percent instead of thirty-three at short-term, or not short-term, sorry, rentals in general, overall.
And of that, ten to fifteen of them are?
Correct. Of that, ten to fifteen are short-term.
Ten to fifteen in number or ten to fifteen percent?
Ten to fifteen in number.
All right. The outdoor dining thing is something, if we're going to take that away, we have to have a, we have a public forum on that, so if we want to.
We need more time.
We're going to.
Mention on it, or talk about this one, so the business owner at Healthy Roots stated that because of that outdoor dining that's not in use most of the week, her customers are having trouble accessing parking in the rear. And I drove it myself, I'm new to the area, I understand what she's trying to do.
All right, that's, that's going to have to go for next word session. So at this point, we have a public comment. If anyone would like to make a public comment, step up here. Step up to the podium, give your names.
Hi, here.
Yes, I'll take the microphone.
My name is Debbie, Debbie Elliott. Okay. I have a comment, yes. I would like to address the council, and you, good evening. Thank you for letting me be here. I would like to speak for someone that was an employee of City Hall, Alyssa Severs. When I came here fifteen years ago, when I moved here, she was very helpful to me, gave me information that I needed. I didn't know anyone. I really didn't know anyone. Come to meet some of you. Some of you know me. Some of you are going, hmm, it's her again. But she helped me. I had, I had a situation with them. I felt my property was vaguely more than it should have been. And so she told me what I had to do, the form I had to fill out, and went and got all my, all of my comps, houses in the area, and none of them were, you know, none of them were checks like mine was, and they were smaller or equal. So I did go to a, what would you call it?
An extra year old?
Yeah, something like that. So they reviewed it, and I was able, thanks to her help in directing me, what I needed to do to help myself, I was able to get that assessment lowered to what was common for the area and the size of my home, twenty-nine hundred square feet. I call it little house on a prairie, because it's a, that's what it is. She's helped me in so many ways with telling me information, if I had a question with who I needed to contact and what I needed to do. And I'm eternally grateful for that because, again, I didn't know anyone. I've come now to know some of my neighbors, some of the good people, and I really, I really appreciate all the help that she has done for me over the years. Fifteen years, quite a long time. I'd be younger then, I was a supreme chicken, but not now. So if any, I just want to say I really appreciate her. I really do, so. really appreciate her. I really do. So, you're very helpful. Thank you. Thank all of you.
Anyone else?
Hi again, I'm Meredith Kiper, um, owner of Healthy Roots. Thank you for driving that, that means a great deal. Um, after speaking with the code enforcement, it's my understanding that that area needs to be re-approved yearly. Um, I don't know that that's happened this year, and if it hasn't happened this year, if it hasn't gained approval from you all this year, and it's getting kicked to another work session, that would say to me that because it never got approval for this calendar year, it shouldn't actually be up. And I would just like to reiterate that it is actually helping business to a great degree. I would like to save business, I would like to serve this community well. I can't do that if I can't keep my doors open. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Do you have approval?
I, I don't know.
My understanding was that the approval was until...
Until we rescind it.
Rescind it.
Yeah.
We don't, we haven't re-approved in either one of them.
We're getting short, we gotta...
Coming off City Hall. Uh, just a couple of comments. I'm really glad where the city's going on the deer hunting, um, because we're definitely, too many deer in the area. And then finally, um, like Councilman Holmes said, I'd like to see the social district be the square, and I would like to see the park to park included, because, um, it's a good place for people to go to get away from the crowd if they wanna have a drink. And also, that area has become kind of a, a, you know, town square. And so I think that whole thing should be the, the social, or the common area, including the park to park. Thank you.
We have time for a wall seat?
Yeah, I'll make it quick. Thank you. This is Cathy Russell, um, three oh three, South Mirers. This is in regards to the social district signage. Um, I had people come into the hokey pokey, um, yesterday with their cups. And my staff person said, "Are they allowed to do that?" And I said, "I don't think so."
No.
But, um, the signage is, it's hard to say, it says "social district ends" on both sides of the sign, and it's across the street at Mirers on the southeast corner, as well as, um, Mirers and Colby on the northeast corner. So I couldn't tell them exactly where that social district ended. And I think there, there's a little QR code, but it's way up here. I could not reach it with my phone. So it, it, it's, it's something to be addressed. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you for that. All right, uh, it's six o'clock. I call this regular council meeting order. Please join me for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, first up is approval of the agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted and add CatchMark to old, back to old business. The work is the part. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the amended agenda, say yes.
Yes.
Those say no. We have an amended agenda. Next up is the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda for July twenty-two, twenty-five. We're no wait. Excuse me. August twelve, twenty-twenty-five.
Second. It's been moved in seconds. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, at the last meeting relating, when we were talking about, um, accounts payable for the playhouse, somebody had asked for an accounting, uh, profit-loss or something rather related to...
Yep.
So that issue of whatever, I think that was for Bon Appetit, I believe. And I was wondering if that has been done?
That's on me, it was...
Nope, it was on...
I'll, I'll, I was here alone, so I'll, I'll take Lynn for that. I didn't pass that along to finance, so.
And I don't, I, I mean, it could be that they're...
Well, they're also...
It's not able to do right now with the personnel situation or something, but...
Well, not only that, the, I did talk to Beth about it. She did do a report for the Friends, but it's difficult to get all the finances set for each show as things are coming in and going out and all that jazz. But anyway, whatever Dan can conjure up from finance, we can do that.
And I'm not concerned really that it's not today, but I would like, the next time or whatever, I'd like to get in the habit, if we can, of getting some kind of accounting on the individual shows. It's at the top of my priority list. I, I think I'll defer a little bit till after Labor Day, and I can provide better accounting after the season, after the summer, and then my priority is to create easier to read accounting going forth. And I, I do acknowledge it's short-handed in there, so I, I'm not surprised that... So.
Okay. I, I have one thing at my page.
Yes?
Um, page three of eight, and, uh, accounts payable, just a, a correction, Jako Construction, three hundred block, it says W Livingston Street. We don't have a W Livingston Street, so it needs to be changed itself.
We actually identified that on the receipt as well. I was working with them, I was wondering where that was itself.
Yeah, it should be self. Just...
That came from Jako, so.
We put it on there verbatim.
Thank you, Scott.
Well, I first looked at it, and I, I wasn't sure what it was for, the way I read it. And then I finally figured out it was for the sidewalk that got done. That's all I had for that.
So, no further questions, concerns, comments? All those in favor of the consent agenda, say yes.
Yes.
Those say no. Consent agenda is approved. Next up, messages from the mayor, council, and city manager. Start with the council member, Steve.
I have nothing tonight.
Scott?
I'll answer three things, but Tom kinda addressed the one. Uh, I was the one that asked for the accounting from the playhouse and whether, you know, we were making any money or not making any money with having an expenditure of eleven thousand, seven hundred dollars on the Bon Appetit, uh...
Act?
And, uh, now we have, uh, two other ones that are in, in the accounts payable. One's at twelve thousand, twenty-eight, and, uh, the other one's at fourteen thousand, seven eighty-five, so, or no, excuse me. Uh, Bon Appetit went up from seven, from eleven seven to twelve oh twenty-eight. Noise is off, what, is it fourteen seven eighty-five? And Joseph, is it ninety-nine oh two? I'd just kinda like to know, we're spending a lot of money. I'd like to know what we're getting in return for it. And I know Dan's gonna put stuff together and address that issue, so, uh, that was one of the things I had. Uh, another thing I had was, a couple meetings ago, I asked about the enforcement of the one-way alley beside Dairy Tree, about, you know, possibly making it a little bit more notable, since people are violating it a lot. And obviously, doesn't seem to be much of a concern to the city, because there's no new signage, and, you know, nobody's asked me anything more about it, or I haven't, you know, seen any improvement there. Uh, another one that's come up at the last, I don't know if it came up at the last two council meetings, it came up at the last council meeting, and it came up in a conversation after the council meeting with the chief, about a abandoned house at seven oh eight, South Division Street. Uh, the doors in the back of the house are wide open, have been wide open since last fall. Uh, Mr. Hubler addressed the issue that if it was a concern that it would be, you know, boarded up. Uh, the chief said something about looking into it. I drove down the alley and looked today, and everything's still wide open. Uh, the house is full of animal feces, it stinks inside. There's kids going in and out of it now. Uh, I don't know why we can't get Muskegon County or whatever it is that owns it now to, uh, do something to board it up or board it up ourselves and, uh, send them the bill. Something needs to be done about it before some kids, I mean, the, the house is rotten inside. I mean, somebody's gonna fall through the floor, or, it just, it definitely needs addressed. That's all I have.
Could I go back? One thing I forgot, so.
Yeah.
Because, well, today, I drove from my house to Zeller. You know, I have a stop sign on White Lake Drive to go across Zeller. And on the northwest side, there was always this little row of bushes that blocked your view looking to the left, coming on White Lake Drive to Zeller. And you couldn't see Diddly Squat. And I'm thinking that that little row of bushes probably caused thirty percent of the accidents that are on that corner, because you can't see down to the left, down the hill. Well, today, our city guys took them all down. And I wanted to show appreciation for them taking their shrubs out of there, because now you can see down the hill to the left when you come up the Zeller Road on White Lake Drive. So I was just happy about that. That's what, that's what, the one thing I was meant to say, I forgot. Thank you. All right?
Yeah. Um, nothing tonight?
Okay.
Uh, I wanna comment again on the need concerning the Tifa, LDFA, Ground Field Authority meetings, moving those meetings from noon to the evening and/or videoing those meetings so that people can tell what's going on. Um, at the, uh, the July thirty, uh, meeting of those boards, there were a couple of things that I think are noteworthy. One of those is that we had, we have approved, the LDFA has approved two land sales, one for four acres and one for twenty-four acres. And that will bring in, if I'm not mistaken, around a hundred and forty thousand dollars and, uh, start generating some tax money too. So that's a pretty positive thing. There's only about seven acres left in the industrial park now. Uh, the other thing that I thought was notable involved, um, the downtown businesses' request for ten thousand dollars for a facade grant for a sign. And the rules on Tifa is that Tifa is only allowed to match five thousand dollars on a facade grant. Um, so there was some discussion on that, and the mayor ended up recommending the five thousand dollar Tifa and also giving them five thousand dollars out of the general fund. Um, well, that would create a pretty bad precedent, and every other business would wanna start getting special treatment like that. And in addition to that, the mayor doesn't have the authority to commit money out of the general fund on something like that. Um, anyway, since we talked about the videos, the streaming and so on, I'm wondering if we could add those four annual meetings to the contracts with CatchMark for video. That's all.
I, to Scott's point, or Steve, were you at the bushes, right? You were the one that talked about.
Yeah.
Um, just to commend DPW for the, the work they're doing, and, and I know Dan has also indicated that they're, I don't know, they seem to have stepped something, something has changed, because I know the, the Marina is looking good, and the bushes are good. Um, I, we have, um, there's some, I don't know what's going on, on Mirers and the four hundred block right across, right in front of the Beckham, um, the, the group home. Uh, but there's something that's, that's, um, causing a lot of standing water when it rains really hard. Um, and I would, I don't know how we can, I watched today, is it today? It rained really hard, there was a bunch of standing water. The DPW truck is sitting in the driveway to the funeral home. There, it's bright red truck, there are two, two of our DPW workers, both with bright orange shirts on, and still people are flying down there just completely soaking those four guys. I, it was awful. So I don't know, um, if we can add some signage. I, I don't know how we enforce the twenty-five mile zone, twenty-five miles an hour, um, because that's pretty well violated frequently. But, I mean, standing water, it's completely obvious, the, the street is basically flooded, and people are flying through there spraying these four guys. It was awful.
Probably trying to just block the road up.
Well, there's a lot of standing water, so I don't know what the, maybe...
Is there a drain there yet?
I, I think there is, and I know they were out there, looked like they were trying to clear something out, but, um, something that...
They've been doing a lot of preventive maintenance on the sewers, make sure they're cleared out. So it's probably what they're doing, just so actively, uh, as far as the twenty-five mile an hour, yeah.
So kudos to the team for doing some really hard work, and apologies for whoever those rude people are that's let, that sprayed them unnecessarily. Yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Well, to go to the mayor, the former mayor, and say, "Diddle, on the speed." Um, I just, you know, I feel like I'm just getting to be an old lady. I feel like, could you just drive the speed limit, please, in town? Thank you. I mean, we don't have a ton of people walking down Alice, kids walking down Alice anymore, but still, they are just, you know, just racing down there, back and forth. And I know our colleagues are trying, so, yeah, it's a huge problem. And I just, um, you know, I had my grandsons over, and I'm pretty protective, but I'm like, "Don't cross the road unless I'm out there," you know, to go over and, you know, to the parking lot, because I said, "Right now, I'm just seeing a lot of speeders." And so, um, anyway, um, a couple, I've got a couple of things. Let me, really fast, regard, regarding Tifa. Um, Tom, I think I mentioned this before about one of the suggestions I had for a little more transparency with Tifa is, why not have beginning of the year an annual meeting with their board, our board? I would like to see what the projects are. We approve the budget, not the projects, but at the very least, I'd like to have a meeting where they come, like a joint meeting, and we talk about the projects they have on the schedule. Um, people in the community could have comment, um, council could comment, and I, I'd like to see us consider something like that. And then I had also suggested, maybe we even have a quarterly report from the Tifa board chair. I mean, they're not legally, you know, required to do any of that, but I think that would, um, resolve some of the issues with, you know, you know, it's all of a sudden a project pops up, even though, you know, if you look at it, that is something usually in our master plan. But I'd like to see at least that first one. I'd like to consider something like that. Uh, let me see, number two. Uh, wanted, I was gonna reach out to you, Brenda. On these really hot days, I, I would like us to have routinely shared cooling areas. Um, not everybody has AC, and some people are in more vulnerable, um, health circumstances. And I, I'd like to make that, if it goes above a certain temp, which, you know, we had those a lot already this summer, share on social media, um, where are the cooling centers? And I know last time I brought this up, I think it was agreed that they could come to City Hall during the day, for example. You know, but there's other places too. Um, okay, number three, and I, yeah, pardon?
Vaccine.
Yeah, do they do that too?
I don't know, but...
That's a space, big space.
But that, they, yeah.
There's fine room.
I don't know, but some, some entities in the county do say you can come, it's a cooling center, you can come here. And so, um, I think that's just the current climate, unintended.
Sorry.
No, you're, you're okay, but you interrupted me, I lose my train of thought. Uh, I've got a couple real fast. Tommy Foster... Tommy Foster, I, I just feel so, Tommy Foster in the fan club plays Memorial Day, Mondays, to Labor Day, seven o'clock to ten o'clock every Monday. And he has a revolving cast of characters. They are all fantastic musicians. I mean, we just, they're so lucky to come and bring a chair and sit and listen to these guys. Tommy is homegrown, if you know Tommy Foster. And he plays all over the place. He pops up all over the place, Justin Advak, Justin Waringo. You know, there's just, we're so lucky. And I just wanted to mention that in case people were not aware of that, that that's quite a resource. Okay. Fourth, I'm sorry, just a real quick goodbye to Scott Hubler. He's not here, I'm gonna send him a note, but he's been in almost a quarter of a century. I served for the original twelve years, and then I'm on my fourteen. I think he has given us good service. I really appreciate it, and I want him to be aware of that, and I want community to be aware of that. We had our disagreements, and sometimes they were disagreements. But I'm gonna have a disagreement with anybody who's been in that position for twenty years, twenty-four years. So I want to give him kudos. I hope he has, has a good retirement, and he deserves it. And then I want to say a very big welcome to Dan, so. And I, I hope we can all do our best to make this a positive experience and we can come up with an even more positive vision for our city going forward.
Thank you.
Sorry to be so long. I won't say anything next to him.
All right. I would like to clarify as far as Mr. Zeimer's comments about the meeting and my approval of funding the outdoor sign, that it was on the agenda. I made the motion to approve it, to bring it to the table for discussion. It was discussed, and it didn't have support. Without discussion, we don't have a consensus, so. This is not your opportunity to speak. This is mine. All right. Last week I was at the summer workshop of the Mayor's Association of Michigan in Portage. It's a great opportunity to sit down with a number of mayors from all over the state of Michigan, from small cities to big cities. They bring a lot of wonderful topics for mayors to talk to one another and learn. They had a really good one on making your city senior-friendly, which we're trying to do here. It was an age-friendly panel discussion. Our, our city is made up of a lot of seniors. And we need to focus on what we can do to make life for them better in this community. There was also a great seminar on housing and affordability. It's, it's an issue everywhere. There was also a very interesting and scary discussion on emergency management. As we all know, we had a pretty good-sized emergency here and how we dealt with it. Portage had a tornado rip through the center of their town. And they learned a lot about emergency management. There was an individual there that is the emergency manager for the City of Oakland. And it's, it's nice that these cities can have this kind of expertise. We certainly don't have that. But he had a really nice little flash drive with all the policies, procedures, and things that handed out to every one of our attendees that I gave to Dan and said, "Here you go." So it was a, it's a, it's a really good thing to sit down and talk with other mayors and see what the things that they're dealing with. And guess what? A lot of what they're dealing with, we're dealing with the same issues here. So it's, it's nice to be able to compare notes and say, "Well, how do you deal with this? How do you deal with that?" With that, I'm gonna throw it at Dan. Welcome to Whitehall. It's your opportunity to say what you want to say to the council and the people.
I appreciate the opportunity to serve Whitehall. I, I had nothing but positive experiences and positive conversations with everybody, and I hope that continues. And was that an omen that we're gonna disagree?
That's a promise.
Pretty ominous. We are gonna disagree.
We are going to disagree. I mean, there is a lot to disagree about. But I promise you, I will try not to be disagreeable. That helps.
All right, we'll move along to public comment.
Hi, I'm Christine Norbert. I just want to say, how are we supposed to get a hold of our city manager when the information still says Scott Hubler? Literally, so, yeah. That'd be really nice if I could get a hold of him with his email and, you know, contact information. Also, Tom Zeimer told the absolute truth. I was at that meeting, and he didn't lie about anything that he said.
Anyone else?
Um, wait. Other comment?
This is a public comment, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So in a comment to Scott Brown regarding the Playhouse, the two shows, Bon Appetit and Josephine Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat, were amazingly attended. So I'm sure you will see a very generous increase in monies that the Playhouse has raised to offset the expenses that are incurred. Both shows were such amazing talent in this community and the regional people who participated. If you did not attend one or the other, you truly miss an amazing, fabulous experience. And I think that's the big thing that the Playhouse needs to be focused on in the summertime, is entertaining shows that people can be happy about. Right now, we all need to be happy. There's a lot of discontent in the world right now. And if you can be at a show and laugh and enjoy and walk out of the show saying, "Wow, that was amazing for a small community to put on a show like those." So please, go see Noises Off. It will be also an amazing show, but the, the two previous ones were spectacular. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would like to make a public comment, as the mayor has in the past. And I would like to correct his statement because at that meeting, he did not bring that subject up for discussion. The discussion had already taken place. The discussion ended when there was no second to his motion. And the reason why I asked for these meetings to be videoed or to be public is so that people can see some things like that. They would have seen the truth instead of hearing that incorrect rebuttal.
I was there too, and I saw a difference, so. All right. There's no old business, we'll move on to new business.
Yeah, we're gonna do the CatchMark contract.
Okay, that's old business. All right. So we have Resolution 2520, live streaming.
I will move that resolution.
I second it. In second, is there any discussion? I'd still like to see it go out for competitive bidding.
If I may?
Yes.
I would like to see us work towards the next budget or so, work towards the items that we discussed. I mean, to see if we can get a plug-and-play type of thing, just to improve it, speakers, stuff like that. But include it in the budget system and just try to make it better as we can make it better.
Roll call, please.
Cabala?
Yes.
Signka?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Holmstrom?
Yes.
Zeimer?
Yes.
Hillebrand?
Yes.
Soltzer?
Yes.
Resolution 2520 is approved. Next up is Resolution 2522, signatures. I'll move Resolution 2522 to change her signatures.
Second.
Been moved in second, is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Holmstrom?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Signka?
Yes.
Cabala?
Yes.
Hillebrand?
Yes.
Zeimer?
Yes.
Soltzer?
Yes.
Resolution 2522 is approved. Next is Resolution 2523, poverty exemption updated policy. Move Resolution 2523 to the floor.
Second.
Been moved in second, discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Brown?
Yes.
Hillebrand?
Yes.
Cabala?
Yes.
Signka?
Yes.
Holmstrom?
Yes.
Zeimer?
Yes.
Soltzer?
Yes.
Resolution 2523 is approved. Next is access agreement, White Lake landfill.
Make a motion to approve the requested access agreement with White Lake landfill as admitted.
Second. Been moved in second, is there any discussion?
Could we have this one explained a little bit, please? So this is city property that the owners of that, of the landfill property would like to access for monitoring purposes?
Right, correct.
Okay.
They on occasion will go need to do water samples, so that's just giving them permission to access it.
Okay, so that's something they've done regularly?
I, I think they have in the past, and I, this is, I think, a renewal of the agreement? Or maybe it's the first time we've actually gotten it down on paper. I'm not absolutely certain.
Have they put new wells in?
I don't believe they're putting anything new in.
No, this is just a...
It's an agreement to allow access to, to the current wells that are in existence.
Right.
Okay, that's, that was, I wanted to, I wanted to know, they, they do have groundwater contamination on the site, so I was just trying to, do they share? I think the last time that this came, I, I asked if they would share the results with us of their regular monitoring. I mean, if it is city property.
We can certainly ask them to do that.
Yeah, and I know that, you know, everybody's being asked to do, you know, P-HO testing, testing as well, so. Or testing for P-HO's.
Any further discussion? Those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Those say no. Approved. Tag day request, Whitehall ban boosters. We'll move the tag day request for the Whitehall ban boosters to a vote. Second. Been moved in second, is there any discussion?
This is a closing in the street also for...
Not this one.
No, this, this is just the tag day, standing in the street. So tags.
Yeah, the last one is the closing.
Okay.
No discussion? All those in favor of the tag day request, say yes.
Yes.
Those say no. Tag day request is approved. Next is American Legion road closure request.
I'll make a motion to approve the road closure on the one day, on Saturday, from four thirty to eleven thirty PM. To raise funds for the replacing the roof for the American Legion.
I'll second that.
Okay. Been moved in second, is there any discussion on this?
We have just a little explanation. Now, this is Colby?
No.
Warner?
Warner.
Well, I forgot. I was, I was trying to remember, and I knew what was ordered, and I forgot. So it's Warner from Colby to Brink.
Just one block, basically, what covers their...
Oh, that's fine, yeah.
Their building. I don't think this has been the first time that this is done, but there's a discussion with the city manager, we've talked, that maybe we could not entirely close the road, just maybe the north lane to allow traffic to... And that, and that's something that Dan is gonna speak with.
Yeah, I, I put a call in today, but I'm waiting your back. There's, there's a turn lane plus the two traffic lanes. I think just giving them the north side, and you could not have to shut down the whole road for a Saturday.
That's true.
And I think what they're asking is to have more parking, use that lane for parking. So I don't see it as a...
Although alternatively, you could just, you know, they, they just have to go down one block, down one block either way. So I, I don't know, it might get, I, I don't know. I, that would be fine. Or, you know, people, most people are gonna be able to sit down, what is it, Hall Street?
Spring Street to Hall or Spring Street to Franklin.
Yeah.
I'd like to know what the police chief thinks about this. Be honest with you.
Would you like that?
We've had a similar road closure in the past.
Yes.
And it, it really does not cause any traffic issues. The one block is easily navigated by, you know, local citizens and visitors alike. So I don't have a problem with the road closure or a partial.
The only thing with a, with a partial is it, it's a busy onto Colby, and so people feel like they're gonna try to squeeze. I don't know, I'm just thinking, even coming in, people are gonna think they're gonna come in.
I think it'd be safer just to leave the whole road closed than try to partial it.
Yeah, that's kind of where I'm at.
Especially the way people drive nowadays. Anyone else want to pipe in on this?
I'm not in favor of closing any public roads for private businesses. Said it before, and I'll say it again.
All right. All those in favor of the road closures, say yes.
Yes.
Those say no.
No.
See, that's an approval. Last up is public comment. Anyone want to make a public comment?
Hi, my name's Dave Pax. I live here in Whitehall on Slocum Street. I've been involved with the Whitehall Community Garden for the past, I guess, month, month and a half, two months? I don't know how long it's been going on now. I just want to say thank you for, for allowing us to use that space. It's been great. Everything's drawing really well. I'm really excited to see what, what happens next year with that, as long as we have continued support from the city. I also wanted to speak about the outdoor dining. I, so I am a patron of Healthy Roots. I think that it seems like there should be a mutually amenable thing that can benefit both businesses. Healthy Roots is open until seven. Pub 111 says they only use it after seven. Maybe there's some sort of temporary thing that they can, you know, gate. I don't know. And then the short-term rental regulations, I think that would be great. I'm originally from Holland, I moved here three years ago. I don't know if Holland has one of those, but I know that Holland is a much larger community than Whitehall, but it has a lot of similar issues. You know, it's a vacation town, there's a lot of influx during tulip time down there. So you do need some, some form of short-term rentals to, to offset that, that need. But with Howmet growing, with Highlight growing, if we can even capture a small percentage of those people here in Whitehall, I think that we could benefit really greatly from retaining some of those employees. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else have anything you want to say? Can I ask one thing? Yes? I don't know, Dan probably doesn't have a whole lot of insight on it. But the, kind of, kind of like dickering going back and forth between the city and the Eagles in the situation with the water backups that they've had, and sewage backups and whatever. I just wonder where, where we might be with that, or if it's gonna go to litigation, or... Will has any insight on it as far as, you know, I mean, I, I...
I know what I was...
The insurance company turned it down, so.
Right, and we have insurance to mitigate the risk for the city. And so that risk is transferred to the insurance company, and the insurance company denied it. So that's our stance. As far as Eagle, or the Eagles, very unfortunate what happened, but they didn't... As far as Eagle, or the Eagles, very unfortunate what happened, but they didn't purchase insurance and they didn't do four things we advised them to do, specifically with sewage backup preventers. So I, it, it's a horrible situation and nobody's happy about it, but there's not much else we can do. I don't think that our taxpayers should have to put a bill for, we mitigated risk with insurance, they didn't, and our insurance company said no.
I, I understand all that, but I, you know, I just, it all, their, their letter that they sent passed on was like the, you know, if we weren't gonna share in their costs, that they were gonna pursue litigation. I don't know if anything's come about with that or...
I actually haven't heard anything more about that since I think that letter and I hadn't heard that part about the insurance or, or anything. So I don't really think that...
My recall is probably about 80% on this, but I do believe, probably what we did, but there was a, a backflow preventer put in there since, has not, or something, something's been done, if I remember right, after that, if there is something there now. After the first, yes, yeah, there's a backflow preventer or something that was put in.
Could I, could I comment on that also? Backflow, backflow preventer. We originally said that we would pay for the backflow preventers, I think, I'm thinking that's the hardware. And I'm thinking that if we're gonna pay anything, we oughta pay for the backflow preventers only. And, and anything else, to me, is up to, up to the Eagles, because if, they, they didn't do what we suggested and plugs in the floor, I don't think that we agreed to pay for those at all.
Floor plugs and two backflow preventers were what was recommended. They didn't take action and then it happened again, is what I understand.
And then since then, they put them in so maybe we could pay for the mechanical part.
I think we did.
We paid for the backflow preventer. We did.
And I think that, in my opinion, we're, we're covered. I mean, I hate to see them, you know, but they got, you know, the most beautiful White Lake Eagles, or Whi, or Eagles in the, in the country, so I'm sure they're gonna find a way to make it work.
Like later on, we can accommodate any, if they're trying to fundraise, we can support them with whatever, you know, any request, but I, I don't think it's up to the city to pay for, for the damages.
Great. Anyone else? We're done. Thank you all for coming.